Okay, so I'll call the City of Torrington Conservation Commission meeting to order Tuesday, January 28, 2025, and we are at City Hall, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. It's 6:32 PM. Present is Dan McGuinness, Erin Stelma, Karen Spitz, Jeremy Spitz, myself, Christine Altman, and staff Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner. First order of business is the November 26, 2024 minutes for approval. We have a motion.
A motion to approve.
We have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Erin? All right, motion carries. Okay, give me one second to get to Dan. Okay, and then we're gonna skip to old business because Karen can't be here very long, and our most pressing order of business is tabling at Winterfest.
So we've heard from Deep, we're all set, we have a spot. They have a couple of questions for us as far as if we need a table, that's their big question, and how many people are coming to volunteer? They anticipate it's gonna be really busy, so there'll be a lot of logistics moving people in and out of the site. And a lot of people are gonna be parking at, was RJB at the bottom of the hill? And they have a shuttle going back and forth because they're gonna max out the parking pretty quickly. Yeah, they get people from all over the state because it's the only place with like ice.
Got good ice.
So, right. Yeah, well, people, right, people were just, yeah, it's, I guess they do, they're expecting a lot of people, and the weather should be favorable, there'll be snow, it'll be very wintery. So they just need to know exactly who's gonna be there and at what time so that they can, we can pull right up and say, I'm with the Conservation Commission, I'm here for this shift. Right now, I have it as George, or I'll start from the beginning, so Karen and Christine from 9:00 to 11:00? I don't know when you can stay, Karen, you said 9:00, but I think as long as Christine can stay till 11:00, that works out. And then George.
So I'm 9:00 to 11:00?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's what you, that's what you said, yes?
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't understand what Nate meant.
Yep, George volunteered and confirmed for 11:00 to 1:00, and Jeremy volunteered from 1:00 to 3:30 for like the last shift, and I was gonna be there as well to help break down and get it into a vehicle. I might arrive a little later than 1:00, but um.
Just you and me at 1:00?
Yeah, if you, if you have to step away, there's no.
No, I just, I have something over in the morning that I actually asked if I could come a little later than 1:00, but.
I think that that's okay, I mean, I think, as long as we don't have anything like.
So I can come back, you know, if I have to too, I can hang out at Highland Lake and then.
Because they were, they were saying that we can, you know, we can get off and, and like go walk around and just leave the table in hand. Well, that's what we, we'd kind of discuss the basic things that we were gonna talk about. But if everyone's okay with that, then we at least have coverage through the whole day with at least one person. Like I said, you're not chained to the, they recognize that people are gonna wanna walk around and move around, and it's cold and stuff like that, but just to have someone in the vicinity or checking into the table.
Because I was thinking I was gonna be cutting it close, so I might be arriving like 1:05, 1:10, something like that one. But if we were having to park and take a shuttle, I might end up being later.
So the point, the point is that if we confirm that we're gonna be there, I can tell Deep to say Jeremy Spitz is gonna be coming at, and they'll have spots for us. So we don't have to take the normal shuttles, we can go in and out. So yeah, Karen, just to clear, so we can go, we can go right there, and even if they're directing people away, just say, I'm here for the Conservation Commission table, and I'll clarify this and send an email if it's different, but the coordinator for Deep said that we should be able to just get right in through the main entrance.
So we're using the main entrance to Burt Pond, that's where we're going?
Yeah, yeah, not the long boat launch entrance, but the beach entrance. I think they set it up at the beach area. So that's, so that's, that's, we're good on that. They, oh, yes.
We had talked about you needed another outreach for the forestry, the urban tree, right?
Right.
That, but that grant is next or?
Right, well, right, okay, so I guess we can go to like the topics that we were planning on covering for that, or to have some information for people, for us to talk about for what the Conservation Commission is doing. One would be the Food Forest effort, so we'd kind of want to decide, we wanna have some pictures or maps or whatever we wanna do for that. Urban Forestry Outreach, we were gonna have that survey there that we had, just asking people what they feel about, you know, certain types of trees and their neighborhoods and where they live and all that. And then in Earth Day, Stuff on the Earth Day Cleanup, whether it's like pictures or in some numbers on like how much we've picked up over the past years and just to talk about it a little bit. I wish we still had, what's his name again, the Bag of Nips, remember that a couple of years ago? Yeah, one of the, we had like, it was almost like a guest amount of nips in the bag thing that one of the volunteers had picked up in one spot off his name. Just to have some kind of prop, but, but yeah, so the urban forestry stuff, so because of the pause in the grants and, and, and the urban forestry grant that we were, that I was going after was part of the Inflation Reduction Act, so presumably that's, they're not gonna have another round for that. So there's no point in applying for it, and that was the big reason we had done that little survey to try to get information. I don't see why we couldn't have it there and continue to collect that information. We are, it's potential that we apply for a different type of funding for that, that's, that we could, you know, we could submit that as just, you know, kind of community, like, like, what am I looking for? The fact that this, the municipality is interested in this, you know, it would just.
It's like community engagement.
Exactly, like pre-engagement for the grant, so I think it's worth having this survey there.
Okay.
The question is for the Food Forest and the Earth Day Cleanup, what, what kind of stuff do we wanna have? We could probably like laminate pictures or something like that so that it's not just a bunch of paper on the table.
We have, we have access?
I think there's gotta be a laminator in City Hall somewhere.
So what kind of? All right, oh, Food Forest.
I mean, you don't have like a board, right, like one of those like trifolds? We could try to do that if someone has one of those, set that up on the table, that's the easiest thing to table with.
What's the content, what kind of content do we want to have? And.
Right.
I can, I can get it all put together if anybody wants to do a little research on their own time and send it to me. And if there's imagery or whatever that can go with it, I can.
On those topics, on the Food Forest, if anyone took pictures, I mean, like obviously I'll send what I have.
Yeah.
And then for Earth Day.
Okay, Earth Day.
And then the Urban Forestry Outreach, I figured we would just have the surveys, right? Just have a pile of them there in Spanish and English.
I have, I have photos from Earth Day Cleanups for years.
I could probably put together a little like, you know, some statistics on, you know, how much the volume that we've picked up or the number of volunteers or that kind of thing. Just to show, well, how, how many years has that, has the cleanup been going on? I probably don't have it going back to the beginning, but since Kim started or before Kim.
It was, no, it was a little after Kim started, I think, the Earth Day Cleanups happened. I mean, it's at least 20, I would think.
Yeah.
We must have hit the 20 mark.
Yeah, so, kind of cool to promote. We don't have any kind of like banner for the front of the table, you know, like in an ideal tabling universe, we'd have like a little skirt or something that said Torrington Conservation Commission. I mean, if this is the kind of thing that everyone wants to do.
Do we have?
There's money.
Is there money?
There's, well, we have money that have just like little monies.
Well, I mean, are we allowed to use this to print?
I don't know if they're a vendor, it's kind of hard, we don't have like a card, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It feels very quick. You never know with like, with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a number.
But those places, you know, and honestly, some of those places might do it for free.
Yeah, what are, yeah, what about, right, because Right Way used to do all of our free signage, do they no longer?
No, they would, they would, the thing is, they're gonna wanna put their logo on it, so it's kind of up to us as to like, if we feel like that's, if we have a little Right Way logo in the corner.
That doesn't bother me.
Donated by or something.
Right, right, I mean, they're a local business too. But that's something to explore next time, yeah.
Is, Winterfest is like a family event, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Would NRCS have something that they might wanna share on our table?
We, I think you're right, I think we did discuss something like this. Coordinating with NRCS and the Conservation District. And I, if it was my job, I totally dropped the ball on that, so I'll try to reach out.
They might even have like seed packets or something like that, that like would kind of draw people in.
Right, I was gonna ask that, we don't have any swag or, or anything like that. But that's a good, that's a good point, they, they might have at least something. I could, should we bring the, should we bring the stuff to animals from our office? I'm just trying to think of things to like, you know, if we brought the, the beaver.
Yeah, why not?
Yeah. And the fox.
Do you have a fox?
Not anymore, that got, I think that got taken with the bear. So now it's, well, by the owner, whoever it was.
Oh, really, the owner took them back?
Someone who worked in building or something had, I don't know, from somewhere. All we have is the really bad beaver. And I think that's the only freestanding thing that we had.
We don't have Smokey the Bear or anything?
No, we don't have anything like that. I know, we, we should get a costume that someone could wear and jump around and, but I will, I'll, maybe I'll bring the beaver. And a beaver, that's like a, you know, it's a great, it's a great conversation starter in the office. People are like, those things live around here?
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Just amazed that nobody knows, or people wouldn't know it.
So we could put like Conservation Commission at least on the trifold. So, and one of the questions that they had was, are we, do we wanna bring our own table or are we okay with them shoveling off the picnic table?
Oh.
What do you have?
I mean, I have a little card table at home, but it's not, I don't know if it could hold the trifold.
What do you just get there, if they, if they're gonna supply tables, why not use them?
Well, they're in their shovel.
Which means that you can't stand next to it, right, like you can't, it's pushing people.
Stand behind it.
Right. Right.
And I feel like it's gonna have, they're gonna shovel it, so it's gonna have snow on it still.
I have, I have a table, how, how much of a table do we need? Like I have different sizes.
Enough to fit a, the trifold, I think, and then have a couple, some paper on the side of it.
So enough for a beaver, some paper and a trifold?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the beaver too, you could put the beaver in front.
Like camp chairs or something to sit on, you know, everybody bring their own camp chair or something.
Yeah, everybody should bring their own. And they will have a fire on the beach probably, so we can, people.
So we can take turns going to the fire.
Yeah, really, I'm thinking I'm gonna bring a blanket too.
They do ice, they do, they do ice fishing, and then they cook the fish on the fire with the kids. So, yeah, so everyone can get a perch or whatever, I mean, I don't know if they're gonna actually get perched, but they might get.
That's what you get there.
Yeah, well, that's good then. So what, so, and they will have food, so they, they wanted to get a head count too because they have like donuts and pizza and stuff around.
Okay.
Think like donuts in the morning, pizza in the afternoon.
Was there Subway, did I, we thought there was Subway or is that something else?
I mean, I think that she was kind of saying they might do, they were non-committal as to the exact food that they would get, but that there would be food available.
All right.
So.
So those of us who have to man this, I mean, depending on what, what you're like, you might wanna bring those.
Hand warmers?
Hand warmers, like the ones that you crack open and then, whatever, and.
It's gotta be pretty cold with, with the wind coming off the lake too.
Okay, so what is it we have, we have a tent, we have a pop-up?
So we have.
And it has sides?
Yeah, so we have a tent from Jeremy, it's his, it's his tailgating tent, so it's like insulated sides. So it should be really good for the, yeah. Right, exactly, and hopefully we're not oriented toward the lake, like we're a little on an angle. But yeah, so we have that, if we have the table brought. You know, I'm gonna get a truck so that I can, well, let's think about this. So do you want me to, do you wanna bring the stuff in on Friday or something that I can load it into a vehicle and then?
Oh.
And then that way.
So then I take a city vehicle there?
I don't know.
Am I allowed to?
I don't remember.
What are my, I don't know what my permissions are.
Let's ask, let's ask.
Okay.
Because that would be, I mean, you're city employee.
Yeah, that would be ideal.
Oh, by the way, I don't know if we announced, but Christine's our second. Well, I don't know, people don't know, you know? Okay, all right, so anyway.
Christine, did you say that we need like some, some displays, something to do with the Food Forest or something like that? What did you say earlier?
Trifolds and that, any kind of, I don't know, if you wanna, if you have photographs, if you have any information that you wanna send to me that I can then try to put together into some graphics?
To do.
No, if I could get one. Does anybody have a trifold? I mean, generally, they're like 10 bucks at Staples.
I don't have any blank ones.
Can we reuse the foam core that's in the office that has plans on it?
Sure, it's not, it's not, we could use duct tape and then fold it.
Cut it.
Yeah, well, we'll talk about that.
We have light duct tape now.
Yeah.
I think they have presentation boards at, on the dollar store for a buck.
Okay, yeah, we'll see, yeah, we, we just got back, we, we got to raid the high school for, for supplies. I should have, I should have looked for a trifold in the high school.
I didn't see anything, I was looking for stuff.
Were you?
Yeah, there was nothing like that.
They took all the good stuff.
They did. Well, not all the good stuff, if you wanted a microphone stand, like they had a lot of stuff that for whatever reason was, you know, it's expensive, but they were, and it was fine, and they were, they were trashing it.
So we'll talk about, so I'll have a vehicle so for, at least for Fridays, we can get it loaded up and hopefully you could drive it, otherwise, you know, you'd probably just have to take stuff into your car.
Okay.
But at the very least, I can pick it up with a truck at the end and bring it back to City Hall.
Okay.
We can unload it the next day.
Okay.
That's, that's all I had. I think we covered everything, I was looking at swag, but that's a great idea to follow up with the Conservation District and NRCS. We're gonna go with, Christine's gonna bring the table, we have the canopy from Jeremy. We'll get some content, I'll print out the, in, in, let me finish my thought, I'll print out the survey, and then I'll probably just do like a sign-in sheet in case we have interested people who may wanna be members. Just because that's always, always good to get those people's information. So, yeah, I think we're good.
Okay. Okay, okay, so then we'll go back to new business, we have we are gonna have like a conservation review, which doesn't happen very often, but we have a re-subdivision on 53 McDermott Avenue, and that's where the Thai restaurant is and the cannabis place and old Eisner, Eisner Real Estate Building, so.
Yeah.
Yes, it's right to the left, it's the property to the left of Planet Fitness. So they were not ready to have a presentation for us today, but maybe Nate could kind of go over it and talk about the things that we need to consider so that we can start considering them. Have an idea.
All right. Can folks see the shared screen?
Yeah.
I can.
Yes. Okay, great, so, so this is the property in question, I've kind of marked it up already a little bit, but it's 2.41 acres, which is not insignificant for a local business property. This is the cannabis establishment, the former Japanese restaurant, that's the real estate office there. So the proposal is to do a subdivision of the property or re-subdivision of the property, and this building is gonna get demolished, and there's gonna be a line some ways like this. Cutting off the cannabis facility to the rest of this property, and there, we don't quite know what the development that's gonna go in here at this point yet, but it is just a, it's just a commercial subdivision at this point. So with the re-subdivision, there does have to be a conservation set aside, and that's where the commission has been asked to comment on. So that's 20% of the property either in land area or in value, so there's a fee and lieu option for, you know, kind of depending on what ends up getting worked out with the applicant. We were hopeful that the applicant would give us some kind of starting point. They did say that they were thinking of some kind of, some splitting it a little bit and having 12% of it be, 12% of the 20% be the values, the fee and lieu to go into the Conservation Commission fund, and then 7% of that, of it, to go into an easement. I don't know if they're just looking at easement or fee. And so I kind of started sketching out kind of the area, the, the area that I thought would be appropriate for a.
What's the blue line before we get into?
That's us, right?
So there's a couple of things I marked, so.
The blue line, there's yellow lines and blue line.
The yellow lines are the property boundaries, right, so.
What's on the left?
Here, there, right, so I'll explain that. So for context, this is the property, right? This is the Ocean State Job Lot property, that whole plaza there, and then there's some commercial properties down on this side. In the rear is the city-owned land that's gonna be developed into the Red Mountain Trail.
And what's the narrow?
Yeah, getting there, so this, this out, blue line outside of the property is the root of the Red Mountain Trail. As it comes through here, you can see there was some test paint put in here. It's gonna cross here, go through the, an easement on the Ocean State Job Lot property, and then come up onto this area here. So with that in mind and with the city property here, my thinking was, we have, this is a potential easement or fee because it is adjacent to city land as a buffer. So that's really just the, the kind of the wooded hillside, like a kind of 20-foot like hill that comes down that has trees on it, and my thinking is that that's a pretty good buffer. If they owned it and, if they owned it outright in fee, they could clear all the way up to the edge, and that would cut out any kind of screening that could be from a future trail extension down this way. So there's, there's that, and basically that 7% comes out to about 7,000 square feet. And so this, this is about 7,000 square feet here, and then over here, this kind of secondary conservation value piece is a weird situation, so, let me just try to click off this. So this right here is mapped wetlands, and this is mapped wetlands. This is actually the stormwater infrastructure, so it's really old stormwater infrastructure where there's a water course that comes through here, discharges into this basin that's being used as stormwater retention, and then it's piped over to here, and there's a brief section of daylighted stream before it gets piped under the plaza into the Noggetuck River. So it's this little daylighted section of natural stream that's also being used as stormwater for the property. Who owns the stormwater infrastructure? It's a part of this property, it is the basin for the property. Right, right now it's owned by, and it's all flat pretty much, and this is a depression here. It goes uphill here because there's a berm for the trail, but this is all pretty much flat. And so they're able to grade it this way, you know, the pipes.
Also, all the pipes.
All the pipes go into here, yes.
And then go down.
And then go down into this and then under, yep.
So that's what they want to, to give us, right? They wanna give us the stormwater basin.
Right.
Which, why would we?
Why would you want?
I mean, it's a wonderful wildlife habitat now, but they have to clean it, it hasn't been, they haven't, the pipes are still, are like crushed going in and out, or like they're greatly restricted, they have to dig it out so that there's capacity, the owner. So it's the part of the prior approval for the cannabis, they had to bring this into compliance, they were just given some time to do that.
Is it in compliance?
No, absolutely not, no, there's trees growing out of it and stuff.
Because he said that it was at the P&amp;Z.
Well, he, I, and I think he did misrepresent that a little bit, the pipes.
There's trees growing out, let's see.
Well, he was talking about the in and out, the pipes, that, that was the direct question, because I caught that. This pipe looks okay, this pipe is crushed but still passing water.
Okay.
It's kind of like buckled, and there's all trees on top of the pipe that is conveying it, so they, this would all have to be cleared anyway, so I mean, in my mind, I'm not an engineer, but to operate this basin, you know, they'd have to clear all the vegetation and kind of maintain it that way to keep the berm intact for the, for the pond here. So in my mind, this is more valuable as a screen to the trail unless there was an easement over this and it had some like enhanced ecological standards for basin maintenance that I don't know, maybe. Is Karen still on?
Yep, she's still on.
I don't know if you are familiar with any like BMPs for like nature basins or anything, like, you know, things that are, that would be a benefit to having an easement that, limited to that?
I, I, yeah, not really, I mean, it's not really my line of stuff, you know what I mean? Like, I'd be guessing kind of like you are.
Right, so, I mean, in the absence of having that, unless the applicant could propose something that we could review.
So to me, that's protected, it's, it's wetlands, right?
It is, it's in a weird in-between zone where it's, it's regulated wetlands, but it's also stormwater infrastructure, so like the use of it as stormwater, I think, right?
Kind of negates some of the wetlands value or negates.
The Wetlands Commission can't restrict it too much, they can't limit them from dredging it because it has to be function as a basin.
But, you know, it seems like for them wanting to give us that as their conservation easement or conservation land is, is giving us a problem, giving us something that we have to maintain.
Well, it wouldn't be, it would be an easement.
Okay, so they'd still have to maintain.
They'd still have to maintain it, but what would the additional conservation benefit be? If they have to still maintain it and it's, you know.
Basically, if that wasn't given to us, it would still, it's not like it would be built on, it would still be.
Exactly.
It's really not adding.
There's no value to us to get it.
My one, my one thought on this is that, you know, having boulders or something placed along the edge of it could be a protection for like them so they don't plow all their snow into it, because they could see that happening, or what, or whatever, just push graded material into it or something like that, but we can enforce that through both the site plan and inland wetlands, I mean, we, I mean, inland wetlands could require them to boulder this in the next application, so, you know, I just don't see any. Right, I see this as being a more valuable for the city.
What is that, is that 7%?
That's close.
They would have to do it out, but yeah, that, that roughly comes to, and then this is about the same, right? So it's either like something here or something here or some mix of there.
You said they wanted to split the 20% with 7% of, of the area, then the rest in value.
Right.
So it's different spots on this map, or in this lot, different amount of value?
No, so.
No, it's the value of the whole.
Right, I had that question too, like is, are they gonna value the easement and then that's?
Wouldn't it work out to be the same number?
So I think the thing is, is that if they give us 20% of the land, that's a big chunk, and it might limit what, how they want to develop it.
Right.
And then if they give us 20% of the value, it's a valuable lot, so like it might be, it seems like a daunting amount. I, I mean, personally, I thought it would be great if we got all the money.
The value is, is not actually preserving the land, it's preserving actually just money.
It could be money and then we use it to buy land or to, you know, preserve others.
The other thing is that would be 20% of the money upfront.
Right.
Which, you know, nobody wants to do that.
Right, well, it would be when it conveys, which is pretty much upfront, because it's just the single lot, but.
And who, who decides if it's 20% of the money or land?
That's what we're consulting on. Well, I mean, it's gotta be like a.
This commission would, would advise.
Yeah.
So we would, and even then, we haven't gotten, we don't know exactly what they're proposing, they're gonna propose something. We would comment and maybe even say, well, what about this, or that, you give alternatives, right? Planning and zoning.
I mean, just from seeing this, I mean, that hill they're not building on, the wetlands that they're not building on, so giving that away doesn't cost them any. So giving that away doesn't cost them anything. And the rest in.
I mean, that's what what most developers do is they're looking for what to give that doesn't cost them anything, like, right? Like, that's the, that's how they do it, but, you know, in terms of conservation value. Uh, I mean, a buffer is is good value, I guess.
They could probably build, they want to do, you know, cut and fill, they could, you know, extend the parking lot or something.
Right, they could put a wall in or something and and fill right up to the edge. It it's just hard to know. And I mean, the the other devil's advocate for this piece is that it could have a buffer around it, right? Like, it could be an easement that, I just don't, the basin management, I don't like, I don't have a good understanding of that because I'm not an engineer, so.
I mean, those are questions, right, that we have to ask. And also P and Z.
Right, and ultimately, yeah, planning and zoning, you know, there. There's also an understanding that it is a lot, it is a commercial lot, it's in the local business district, it's not like. You know, oftentimes it's clearly a fee and lieu situation because there's just zero conservation value to protecting any of it, really. So there's, there is a valid argument to say like, well, the commission could say, well, we recommended a hundred percent fee and lieu. You know, that. So, you know, it's, we'll see what what they present.
I mean, there's already trees there, so extending, having. Having that buffer there does add to the forestry. I mentioned there's some animals. Or how how wide is that spot, the yellow, the yellow?
So I tried, sorry, I went out, oh, which 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 area?
That yellow to the left.
This one? Probably, I don't know, I want to say fifty feet.
We do own that now, right?
We do, yeah, we own that. Seventy-five. No, it's definitely, I mean, there there there's value and and I am. You know, I don't have them. Right. Uh, it is interesting because I I drew this line out here using this, but the canopy does stretch over. And this parking is, this asphalt is just degrading, so it's. It's hard to, I was like kicking away the leaf litter to try to find the edge of pavement and it's like.
It is under there.
This may be substantially thinner, you know, to to bare ground. I mean, it's not to say we couldn't take it on that and let it just revegetate, but um, you know, that's a. So that that's the basics. So at least when they, so with their timeline for approval on this project is that. They've submitted and they're going to be on the agenda for the February meeting. The public hearing was set for the February, the first, there's two meetings in February this month. So the first meeting, all that was set because they haven't gotten anything to this commission and the commission has to review it prior to the. The subdivision, there's a second meeting, so it's going to get bumped out to that. So basically, the commission will make. Should make a decision.
We would be putting. Yeah, that's why I thought it was good to understand it now and think about it.
Right. So it doesn't hurt to drop, if you guys want to go there, if you're shopping at Ocean State and you want to stop by. Just know that you drive to the back of the property and you'll see kind of the natural part of it.
I drive by it, it always looks rundown, like nobody wants to go there.
Sketchy vehicles in the back.
Thai Place closing, why are they?
No, 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 the Thai Place is doing great. The Thai Place is right there. So but they had it, they had it, there was a really fantastic Asian fusion place. Where the cannabis building is and and I think they did a reasonable takeout. But you're right, people didn't, I mean, that place was beautiful inside. It was gorgeous, it was huge, it was quiet, it had great food, had a great bar. But it was a bad location, like you said, like, you know, it's, I think it's kind of hidden away. People will go out of their way to find weed, but.
There's always a robust traffic in there now and people have plenty of space to spread out. Not even just idle their vehicles right along here. I'm like, oh my gosh, it's like the worst.
If you want to say his plans, like, why does he want to subdivide it out? Is he selling the cannabis place and then he wants?
So the cannabis place wants to be independent, right? And they want to, they're going to, they're going to develop the rest of the parcel.
This whole thing, or was he renting that house? I think that was his property. I mean, that would make sense, right, to be, because then it got developed into the restaurant. He must have um.
I don't even know how that even happened, but. Well, for a commercial building, you can have multiple, like, businesses on a single lot, yeah. Thinking residential. But yeah, anyway, so there's, there's a kind of a lengthy history on this whole. There was the cannabis approval and that got like a special approval because it's a cannabis location and. There's a whole history with that and that's what, you know, originally this wetland kind of was regulated under, but uh. But, yep, so just keep that in mind, take a look at it, and then again, it'll be the next meeting that'll, that they should present. With their engineer, their engineer would present.
Okay, so.
You had said one last thing, sorry.
Sure.
The blue, you had said that the parking lot's already there, so that might be thinner.
It may be thinner.
Imagine they're going to be developing, ripping that all out and like redoing the whole thing, right? So.
Yeah, it's hard to say. I would think that they would, we had had one prior. Potential business that was going to go in and they were going to occupy this area here.
So that whole part, that whole parking lot area might be ripped up anyway.
Yeah.
Basing our decision based on where the parking lot ends might not be worth it.
Right, yeah, I mean, we could, I mean, there's nothing wrong with taking area with parking.
Right.
With with pavement on it. It's it's breaking apart anyway.
Because when you're on it, it's almost like gravel.
I think it's millings, I think it's old millings. But maybe it's like kind of fused together or maybe it was ancient asphalt and it's just broken apart.
Into tiny little pieces.
It's it's hard to tell. Like you said, it's pretty, I mean, you can tell it's it's beat up.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably at least thirty years.
So what would happen too, because if it was held by the Conservation Commission. Once this came up for, like, let, when the subdivision happens, right, and let's say they take one of these pieces. What city takes it as an easement or, well, seesment, let's say they take it as easement. Then when this application comes up, this commit, commission will have to, you know. Review the easement and see if it impacts it. So, you know, there's always, anytime we take an easement like this. It ultimately, if there's any development on that parcel, even if it doesn't appear to impact it, it'll come to the commission, so. Yeah.
Okay, so any more comments or questions on this one? Moving on to.
We're gonna jump off, sorry, guys.
Okay, bye Karen.
Bye. See you Saturday.
See you. Earth Day event scheduling.
So we don't have to get into the weeds of. Just reading when she left. We don't have to get into the weeds of 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 planning for this yet, but the Winstead Conservation Commission. Or I think it might be the Travel Limited Chapter runs it. They've scheduled their day for April twenty-sixth. For, and they wanted to kind of coordinate with us because they came and they volunteered in Torrington last year. And so they won't, don't, they would prefer to have us do it on separate days. The day that they picked is the week after East or the week. After Earth Day, the weekend after Earth Day. And so if we did it the weekend before, it would be Easter.
Nineteen, oh, that's the nineteenth, right? April nineteenth is.
Yeah.
Easter.
Well, it would be, it would be Easter, so it would be the Saturday before Easter.
Are people gonna?
I don't know. I don't have a problem working it. Well, I don't know.
Really either, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm not the norm. I'm not gonna assume I'm the norm.
I don't travel anywhere.
Friday and Sunday are really the holidays. Maybe people are traveling.
That's my only, yeah, like, it's not on Sundays, it's not on Easter, but it's the day before Easter. But then the alternative is that we do it the weekend after. Which is, would conflict with Winstead unless we did a totally different day, but that kind of gets outside of.
What about if we did it the week before, before Easter?
Week.
Is there a conflict?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, it's.
I don't have my, I can't.
We still have some time. I mean, there, I can look into that. What is the, someone have their calendar?
Nineteenth, it would be the uh twelve.
Is that too early for folks?
Not too early for me. I mean, April is just a great month because nothing's leafed out yet. And it's good for cleaning, so earlier I think is better than. Later, but.
When, what day, say that day again.
It would be April twelfth, if I'm right, if my math is right. Saturday, April twelfth.
And if we're okay with that, it it, the other benefit is that if we want to do this food forest thing. In um.
At Jigs Donahue.
At Jigs Donahue, it would give us more time to separate those events, right, like. Or and and then we do a planting a month later instead of like a couple of weeks later. So that would be nice. That would actually put a a meeting in between. I guess they would probably have a meeting in between either way, but anyway, everyone here seems okay with that date?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Sounds good.
Cool.
Yeah, I think that nobody who does Earth Day cleanup is going to question why it's not on Easter weekend. Do you know what I mean? They're going to be like, oh, of course.
The week before.
Right.
Alright, cool. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and just kind of keep that in my notes, but we'll have. At least, how many, we'll have the February meeting and the March meeting between then.
It really does.
So the next meeting, we probably have to, you know, start thinking about making a bigger agenda item.
Okay. In old business, the Jigs Donahue Food Forest Planning. I think the trees are all still alive.
Yeah, Christine had the trees keeled in and it's hard to tell, but.
They're bendy. We went out and checked and they're still bendy.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Yeah.
I'm just going to get it on Jigs Donahue. So. We had, where this left off is that we had some. We, this, this is the general location we were thinking of doing it. We have an approval, minutes, an approval for putting it. Uh, in the park in consultation with the Parks and Rec Director, so. But they've already indicated that, you know, this property, they don't consider it to be like an active field use in this small corner here. And so they're pretty open to us doing it wherever. So we had the Conservation District, still are trying to squeak it into their grant. Where their grant is at this point, I have no idea, like as far as, you know, them getting paid off for it, but I don't know what it's through. But they um. They wanted to go check it for potential contamination or do some due diligence to. To confirm that there was no contamination. It's clearly not a huge priority. I've been kind of like poking in at a net and she's very busy and overwhelmed. They did get out there and they took a soil sample and it was. Didn't look concerning outright and it wasn't like hard compacted fill, so. But she was going to try to get testing done, but was having a hard time finding places to test it and I don't know what she was even going to test it for. But I went back and looked at the aerials, kind of to do sort of a phase one, like. Roughly to see if, I kind of went through the city records, I talked to um Public Works. They didn't have any record of there being any use on here that would be concerning for contamination. This whole area was actually forested in the nineteen. What are those, where are the old? Yeah, the thirties aerials, um, thirteen, nineteen thirty-eight. So this was all like tree at that point. And then it kind of skips to the seventies and later and then it becomes open and becomes a park, so. I gave her that information just to kind of put on file, to have something to show for that, but. I mean, it's a floodplain, right? It's right next to the river here. I'm sure it has received periodic flooding, at least prior to fifty-five. But yeah, so we're basically, at this point, we would have to reengage with them. To see if they are, just to confirm that they're going to proceed with putting the trees in that location. There's a piece of sewer infrastructure that comes in and there's like a manhole cover here. So it comes like, and then it goes out to Pearl, so I think we just have to make sure we're. We're off of it.
Further behind or further forward?
Further out here somewhere. I don't know how far away they want. North is that, yes, north is up.
Going up north is not an issue in terms of sunlight.
Right, exactly. Being somewhere in the zone is where we want to be. Like, it's far from the canopy edge, but we do get all this south aspect, so. It's funny, you can kind of like see different, that's, that's in the winter, right? So you're getting some extreme angles, but. This summer shot, right? It's hard to tell because they're at different times, but. I feel like there was another summer where actually the whole thing, yeah, that's all shaded over, right? So. It's a narrow strip, but, you know, I think fruit trees can, you know, they can take like six hours of sun, you know? So anyway, so uh, so yeah. I'll reach out and try to get confirmation from them that like, yes, they want to proceed with this. Because the next question we have is like, what's our engagement strategy to pay like, right? Like, it's. It's uh, it's coming up. We did this whole thing for the other one and mailed and we're all stuffing envelopes and.
The um, is Jeremy going to be able to claw back any of that money? Because we're almost out of money for mailings.
I know, oh, I know. Um, yeah, because, yeah, our department. Because. Park and Rec and Public Works kind of torpedoed the whole thing. We'd at least like to get the mailing money back because it, it was a lot of mailings that we did. It was like hundreds. But putting that together again, I think it's going to be challenging for me to have time to like. Canvas and you know, figure out where all the individual addresses are. And send something again. So the question is, how do we, how do we do some kind of engagement?
It, to me, I mean, is it me or does it seem like a smaller? Neighborhood than. Am I like out of my mind? I mean, it really looks like the people who would be using it would be just that. Block and maybe across the street, like how, how big is the?
We did a pretty big radius on the other one, just because that nor, like, because of.
And it's isolated, like, you know what I mean? It's isolated by Route Four.
Right.
Into that, that kind of neighborhood. I mean, it does actually function that way.
Right.
I don't know that this one does. I don't know that this one does.
Right.
I don't know.
We could do that. I could try to, and then this is local business, right?
Right.
So I mean, I can try to, I could try to um, just like hit this block here. And this is more three families and stuff, so you're actually getting, the density is greater, so you maybe you can pull in more people. And then maybe up Grove Street a little bit. So we can, I can start to like look into maybe figuring out how we might do that and just do like a more limited, targeted mailing. In Spanish and English, we'll try to do the same thing, just in a more limited way. A sign like, like one of the.
That's a good idea, too.
When they're walking or driving by.
Yeah. Well, so we made up, we got right way to make us those signs, but. I made the mistake of making it specific to that event. I should have. Because what what happened was we, the the Conservation District did the design. It's like, this is wonderful. We'll give them the design. We don't have to worry about any of it, but what we should have done has just been like food forest. And then had like white tape places that we could just like change the name and the location and all the stuff and, you know. The problem is the sign is so integrated, like there's so much like, it's, it's like, the font is embedded in it. It's not like in a corner, like a call out, so it like. I looked at it, it's.
I think, can they uh, well, the thing that's probably expensive is the printing.
Yeah.
It's not the, it's not the materials for any.
We can try, I mean, it's, you know, I'd love to reuse the sign. So I can look into that and or even bring it to the next meeting and look at it, see how we want to do that. But yeah, we have multiple signs. If we could do that. Around the whole neighborhood, if, there's a pocket park in here too, we can throw, slap up a sign on the city property there and in the right of way. I have no problem.
Yeah.
Taking, well, it's not my, it's just sidewalks, right? So, but uh, anyway, we could figure that out when we get a little bit closer, but the idea of that would be to have a mid-May paint uh planting. Maybe we could push it out to June if we really wanted to, like early June. So we have a little bit more time.
So does Food Forest read to people or does it seem like it's too big? Like, I felt like. The opposition to the Food Forest was. You know, like it was blown up in their, in their minds. So it's like an orchard is a large thing. A forest is even bigger than an orchard, in my opinion. Like, it's a community, it's community fruit trees. Like, you know, I love the Food Forest, like, label, but.
How many trees are there, three?
Yeah, right, it's like.
And I think I was, I was calling it a community. And I think I was, I was calling it a community orchard, just because I was trying to use language that was not Food Forest and that seemed. But that, you're right. I think that they called that out as like, they thought it was gonna be an orchard, you know, that we were gonna plant an orchard there. So that's a good point is maybe trying to work on communication. I do think that there's a slightly different demographic here. From my experience doing enforcement and all these.
Yeah, well, and what do you?
Mostly non-English speaking.
Okay.
And renters and, you know, shady shady landlords. Um, and some not, and some not. This guy is, is nice. Daniel Chimbo. But uh, but anyway, so, you know, I, I, I don't know. There could be opposition anywhere, right?
Right. Well, and the, and the thing is, is it only takes two people getting themselves worked up over, over it. And, you know, like, I mean, you saw how it was. Like there was people who were not even close, worried about bears. And the people who were close really were excited about it.
I wonder if, and I'm just trying to think of the worst case scenario. I wonder if we like started publicizing it and it got back to Parking Rack and then they yanked our permission. Like that's a possibility, right?
Can they yank our permission?
I mean, could they even of?
Don't we have a permit?
It's not a permit. It's just minutes saying that we had approval.
So what do they, are they completely like, what's the word I'm looking for? Nothing regulated at all? Like, is there any kind of paper trail for them? Or they just say yay and nay and it's all handshake? You know, is that what it is?
I mean, I get the impression that the, the, the council kind of lets them operate in that lane and that they don't. You know, if it was like a public health and public safety issue, they may like. Pull back some of their authority, but their authority is not really clear in the charter. It's, it's. And but the, the city council is not gonna step out on that limb to protect three fruit trees going into, which I don't blame them.
I just am kinda confused as to how they operate. Like, if, if they can give permission and rescind it. Um, do you know what I'm saying?
I don't know.
What is it? There's no?
I, I'm not saying that they will rescind it. I just, I, based on their behavior, I feel like.
It is a possibility, yeah.
You know?
So like, you have written confirmation them approving it and you said.
It's in minutes that they, that they produced.
There is a motion.
There was a motion in the second.
But then the thing is, it's like, you know, when there's a motion to approve something in like wetlands or planning and zoning or something, like notices go out. And, you know, like there's a record.
Can't just say the next meeting.
Sorry, changed our mind, right? So that's what I'm trying to, that's, I'm trying to suss out like. What is anything binding, you know, that they do? And then, but I mean, there must be because they're doing uh, you know, they're paying money. To have like a, an inventory of the parks.
This time with a motion, it sounds more. Official than the last time the guy just told you.
Yeah, definitely.
That was one guy, even though he was higher rank, that one guy said it.
Right, I, I agree. I know this is clearly a safer bet and it's kinda just like worst.
And it was their idea and we didn't want it, so that makes it even better. So happy for them.
Right.
We're like, no, no, not Jigs Donahue. And they're like, yeah.
Okay, well, uh, so, so for that, we, you know. I don't know. Do we wanna, do we wanna kinda start serious discussion on this at the next meeting or because we? Timelining it backwards.
We do. I think that we need to bring um, the Conservation District back in.
Yeah.
And. Figure out when the best time to plant is gonna be. In May.
Maybe I'll even have a meeting with them first at their office and try to do it with them. And that way I can like, we can present something to you guys and then.
And then I think that we need to get confirmation before we do anything or invest anything. We need to have confirmation that we have a go ahead from.
Right, just keep, keep, keep them involved in everything.
Every aspect. I mean, I don't wanna ask them, I don't want to give them the impression that they, that we want their input. Like, I don't want that, but.
I know, and I kinda don't wanna remind them of it.
I know, yeah. What, what do we do? Maybe it's just a memo that like, you know, it doesn't have any other plans. It's just a.
Here's, here's a copy of the letter, memo. Here's a copy of the letter we're sending to the joining.
Right. I do, I, I, I feel like I'm nervous about it, but I agree that, you know. It would put us in a better situation to make them partners.
Plus, you know, if they do rescind, then when um, Sloan calls you, you got her a story to talk. She liked that story.
True, you don't want them to, a- after you send out the mailings, you spend more money on mailing.
If they wanna pull it, let them pull it at that.
Or, or sooner, like, right? We pick a day, just say, this is what we're gonna do. And if they don't, I mean, if they then wait until after the mailing, once they have approval or notice ahead of time. Worse on them.
And I don't think it looks good on them at all for, for anything, but.
And I, and I will say that with the, with Bannon Street, no one came forward and complained to them directly. It was initiated because she read it on the mayor's Facebook page, the chair, and then called a meeting. And then they kinda like. Went out into their context in the area and brought and kind of was like, is this a problem with you? And kinda ginned it up a little bit. Because no one, we didn't get any calls or anything negative about it at all. We got positive calls um, from the neighbors across the street who came out and like. And it only happened when she saw it on the Facebook page. So we probably wouldn't have, it probably would have gone in. The neighbors might have come and were like, might have been pissed off during the planning, which wouldn't have been great, but um. I don't know.
I mean, yeah.
Regardless.
Yeah. I would agree that that, that looked like the case as well. Alright, so next thing is the owl boxes. Uh, I printed out some information on the habitat of um. Bard owls and barn owls. Because when I was researching, the ones that actually do. Eat a lot of rats are barn, barn owls. But I don't know. So I thought, just thought it would be kinda interesting to. That would be kinda interesting to, to see if there was a way. Of making nest boxes that are. What, like attached to the backs of people's garages or something like that? Like what would work for barn owl? And then I was wondering if this, that kinda information could be something that uh, was presented at the Winter Fest. Like, maybe, you know, Torrington has a rat problem. Maybe this is a solution.
Yeah.
Or um.
Yeah, we could, it's just an interesting thing. I wish we could get an owl.
Right. Let's, let's call.
Or, or a rat.
Oh, I can get you a rat. You wanna find your rat? I'll bring a rat.
Slap that on the table. Um, the one, so with, with barn owls, I would look into their habitat suitability, cause. I think that they're like an open farm.
Is that what they need is like big grassland?
Yeah, and that's why they're not as common in this area. Cause it's just a little bit outside. Cause uh, this doesn't have the same sort of description of.
It doesn't, you're right.
Well, it does, it does. Desert, grassland, marsh, open woodland. So, I mean, open woodland's in there, but they were talking about. Uh, can be placed in a variety of structures, barns, silos, granaries, grain elevators. Kind of like a more.
Stables.
Um, or freestanding pole. Yeah, I mean, it would be interesting if we could get it to like, I don't know if they're like compatible designs, just in case. But I think it's more of a um, bard owl is like, their habitat would be like Red Mountain, like that area. And, you know, any, any kind of forested area, you know, you could see them, especially if it's contiguous to more forest.
I just think that, like, the whole, this whole thing is kind of an interesting, like, I feel like that is uh, interesting information to present. Because the rat problem is in the news and on people's minds.
Yeah.
And to be like, so what, what like could we bring in? Like, so, you know, I don't know, maybe um. Maybe um, figure, you know, seeing which is it like red tail hawk? Like I do know that I've seen red tail hawk. In those, in the kinda rat areas hunting a lot. I don't know if that's what they're hunting or if the, they're hunting chickens. Because that's one of the things, bringing rats, you know, I don't know.
There's a huge amount of tie-in, I think. Um, it's really interesting. There are, the other thing is like, like foxes. Right? And then, and then with all of these, it brings in rat treatment. And like, if you're gonna put poison out, you're gonna be. Poisoning to all the predators. So there's like a whole, there's a whole deep layered conversation to have with people over this. Which maybe will come out organically if we just sort of like, hey, we're interested in this. And then, you know, this is some, this is an idea and we're trying to figure it out. But, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's cool to, to talk about now.
See if I could flush, flush something. And we're ready to move on. We already did tabling at Winter Fest. Are we ready for staff update? Okay, that's on open space inventory.
So, um, there was a site visit. I'll actually, I'll let you guys, did, did you, you went on the site visit too? Or, yeah?
So Nate and I looked at it after, cause I was like, I was so discombobulated, couldn't figure out where we were, where we were supposed to be going. Even got onto the property. We never even made it onto the property. Nope. Yes, but I don't think it was, that was a big deal. But, but show, show the plots that we were, that I had, Nate and.
Oh, is that the one where we was in the, in the, uh, Greenbrier?
Green, Greenbrier.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah, that was, yeah, wandering around the woods.
So.
Getting very far.
So you guys accessed in the right place.
Yeah.
That was right here. Um, there is an access easement that this was granted for the city. To access the conservation land through this kinda. Multi-floor thicket, sounds like.
Yeah.
And then it kinda connected up with this.
We made it ten feet in.
Yeah.
It would take an all day to get that.
And then. And there's a water course here. You guys didn't even get to.
That was like um, turtle nests.
In the sand?
Yeah.
In the road, the old road, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause.
Yes.
An old road, many moons ago. Um, so that's that, that's the legal access for the city.
That is the, that way over there is the plot that we're supposed to be.
Wait.
This, right?
Yes, yes, right. With this thumb here too. I think that this.
So then we have the other one. That was where we were getting confused with where the other two actually were.
Right, this is at the bottom of the hill, right? When the road starts to curve. There's like a driveway that comes in. Like a, that goes straight across here and it's right above it.
That's the one that has the white picket fence, right? And the white picket fence is now dilapidated. Yeah.
Yeah. So, so this is an option. It's not the legal access though, for the city. This is the, this is the easement.
Well, that was tricky of them.
So what I, what I, what I did was, and I don't know if we're gonna hear anything. I sent a letter to the owner, cause the owner changed recently of this property. Um, and this has a story, this has a recent history of denial for, they're gonna put in a multifamily complex in here. In the neighborhood.
The one, that was the one where the attorney, was that the one where the attorney was um, that was before you came, right?
Right, it was a big wetland thing. Yeah, it was a huge, so what basically.
That was, that was Ken Rica, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was the one. There, there was like a, an attorney that was present as a, what do they call them? What is it that, that Steve Iven wanted us to be for the?
An intervenor.
Yes, she was, yeah, she was an intervenor. She had no idea what she was in for with these sidewalks, like.
Gosh. So, so, right. So they was gonna do that and then they denied it because it wasn't consistent with community character. That's how Planning and Zoning denied it. And now it's illegal to do that, cause you can't, cause it's just basically denying the project. Because you don't want a multifamily in your neighborhood, even though it's, it's permitted by the zoning. So anyway, after that diatribe, I sent the new owner and I said, hey, we know we have this access. Here's a copy of the easement that, you know, for us to traverse, traverse over the property. Would you terribly mind if we access from the north here and cut through here, just because you can see the canopy? We could probably like skirt over to this side and get into this more open forest. And then this whole area is all pretty like. Other than it being wetlands, is all pretty like, you know, a different sort of condition than where you guys were, which was.
Just crazy.
This. You can see, it's just like, that looks absolutely terrible.
Yeah.
Whole bit.
We knew, uh, once we were in there for like a minute, we knew we needed loppers, not machetes.
Yeah. So anyway, I sent that. Couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago. By the next meeting, we'll know if they're just not gonna respond to us. I could try to get their number from the um, the assessor, cause they actually keep telephone numbers if they can get them. But I don't know, that might be a.
Well, I would think that if they care terribly that they say no.
They bought it in the past year.
Was his plan to do something with development?
We haven't heard anything from them. Developer, small, small developer, um, out of Bristol, I think, is where the, where the LLC is based out of. But um.
I liked the multifamily plan. I thought, I mean, it was a good use. It saved so much of the land. It was just, you know, kind of a small area of intense development.
Right. Yeah, and that, that was, that was part of the problem. So yeah, the developer, I assume, would probably put in like single family. In something, in a similar fashion, although there's so many wetlands on this property, like. They're not gonna be able to develop the wetland. So it's like, they're gonna have to snake something. And the terrain is pretty, it's like a hole, right?
It was Ken Rica's plan to have it up in that area, right up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Oh, it was gonna be up here, like in this block.
I think so. Right?
Well, some guy, the people were calling when it was in for sale and I was like rooting for certain people. And one guy's like, I wanna turn it into a farm. I was like, that'd be amazing, yeah. But he didn't, you know. It ended up just being a true, like, so I don't know. And I don't know what their intentions are. I thought, hey, you know what? Maybe they give us this access as a goodwill token. If I was them, I would do it. Like, you know, to, better to butter up the Conservation Commission. On your way to do something that's probably gonna be confrontational. So.
Yeah, especially when we reject the twenty percent.
Right, right, exactly.
We don't want any of the wetlands, thanks.
So anyway, I don't know what you guys wanna do. If we wanna hold off on, because it seemed like for you, it was.
It's frigid right now. I mean, spring might be better.
Here's the, here's the other thing. I mean, we could also, if they don't wanna get back to us on it, whatever, I mean. I would look at the easement again, but I would think it would be their right to provide us that. Like they, like, I don't know what. Like if it's completely, it's so thick that it's impenetrable.
Meaning that we then go back and say, since you didn't approve of our going through the northern access.
Right. Right.
Us attract on our easement.
I don't know if we can do that. I, I don't know. Or at least allow, I mean, we didn't get permission to, to clear it, right? Like, so at least to say, hey, we have the right to go in there with loppers and. Do a significant clearing to get through to it. I don't know. That's, I guess that's a conversation. We'll see if they get back to us. And if they don't, we'll. Cause I mean, getting access to a conservation property is probably worthwhile. And it's a nice one. It's got all this. There's a piece in Litchfield even. It's like three acres. And then the whole thing is almost twenty acres. Fifteen acres, so. And then there's the one on the other side of the street. I mean, that's another possibility is to go to that one at some point. That's only three uh. Whatever that is, five acres about.
Three point three more?
Yeah, plus this one. This whole block here. So, anyway.
Okay.
Do you wanna just defer that to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll table it to the next meeting.
Okay, uh, HVA crossing assessment. We got a lot of, a lot of projects going on. Did we wanna schedule something for that? That was for the last two crossings.
Oh, yeah, and they have two left. And they are located where?
On opposite sides of the city. One is. Well, two to three. One is that big area crossing Route Eight. It was like, just like a giant bubble. Then there's what I think is a crossing on Burm- Bur- Burmound Road between where the fire training area is. Between the, the State Forest and the State Park. Um, and then on the other side by Weed Road, um, there's a connection. I think it's all owned by the Torrington Fish and Game. All, all the way up on that other side there. So.
I think it's worthwhile to schedule, to schedule one. Um, you like to do it at Thursday, Thursday at five. What does that work for?
One sunset, this is, it will say late, a lot later, but it's.
It's still, well, I. It's still, well, I would say let's just do the Weed Road one, let's do one, if, if everyone's okay with that, or the other one.
And do we want to wait? Right, so, so what, what happens, right, so the question is what happens in February, yeah.
Um, I think it changes like a minute or two a day, one to three minutes a day or something like that.
Like half an hour.
So by the end, so like by the beginning of March, we're at six?
Probably, I mean, sunset's five oh three, dusk is five thirty-three. So, you would, you know, there's a small period of time where the sun has technically set.
So what if we, what if we scheduled for? Like early March?
March, March will probably be fine.
So the next meeting, we can. And figure out where, I mean, we can do it on the other side too.
Red Mountain Trail.
Red Mountain Trail, so. Let me think, where, where was I in this whole saga, so, we didn't have, last we left, we didn't have enough money. We, we received money from the state. Our consulting engineering firm told us it wasn't, we were three hundred thousand dollars short. So we had to go back to deep and say, how do we do this? We went back to deep. They gave us some guidance, but it was still kind of unclear. And so we didn't know if we were gonna have to apply for a new round of funding. I don't know where this funding comes from, like, I don't know if it's a pass-through. If it comes from like the Park Service or something. So I'm very hesitant to apply for anything, well, we'll say. In this environment, it just feels very, at least right now, where there's no clarity on what, what's being funded or not. But, the um. Luckily, hopefully, we don't have to worry about that, I brought that up to the mayor and the Public Works Director, and they were like. What deep told us to do was to scale it back as far as we could, so that it was like. You know, we could say, bare bones, we could say we did it, but it was like maybe a dirt compacted path and like, you know. A picnic table and like a bad sign, and like, something to say like we did it from this. You know. That was so that we could. Finish that grant and apply for a new grant without having to do a modification to our contract. So they were like, well, you can do that, and then apply for another grant to like. Right, exactly, so, but it is, it's precarious, because you have to line up like, what if you don't get the next grant and like. What, you have all, you have all the construction people mobilized, and then you have to like, make sure that the funding lines up.
Getting uh, the area cleared that we need cleared would be.
Well, so what happened was, so I brought, so we brought that to the mayor and Public Works Director, one of our regular meetings, and they were like. If we do it this way, it's just not gonna happen, or it's gonna look really shitty, and like, we don't, we don't want that. So they actually put it in the budget to just cover it straight up, three hundred thousand. I don't know that that's gonna pass, that'll be in the mayor's budget, and I don't know if it'll pass through in the spring. So, fingers crossed, if it does, then that's fantastic, then we know we can just kind of proceed. We can mobilize and get the work done probably by the end of the year. If it doesn't get into the budget, it kind of throws the whole thing into, what are we gonna do here, and we're probably gonna be pushing the project out. One or two years, just to try to like, get everything figured out again, and it's already been pushed out a year. We were supposed to have had the work done by twenty twenty, by twenty twenty-five. So anyway, so the hope, so I hope that they just are able to find three hundred thousand dollars and just. Shunted into that line.
It's been such a long project. Well, the, it took, it took years to acquire the land, it took years just to, to um. Get ahold of the railroad company, and you know what I mean, like years, I think that we started, we started working on this with Kim.
Right, so two thousand and ten.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know, it's, when did she leave in, in twenty twelve?
Yeah, because we started around twenty thirteen. But anyway, so that's the status of that project, hopefully, like I said, it's cautiously optimistic that, you know, we can proceed, and then that'll make things go really quick. And then we can focus on, you know, if the grant rounds still open, getting a bridge, you know, and getting to the other side and continuing on along, so. Um, you know, we're gonna have to keep an eye on budget season, if you do watch the budget during budget season, just keep an eye out for that and conversation. And, yeah, so that's that.
Urban forest inventory management plan.
Right, I kind of already touched on this, but basically, it's, you know, there's a, there's a round that, you know. The equity round is certainly gonna be axed due to the equity component, and that was a zero, zero match, so that was really attractive. There is a standing grant round for man, for planning, for forest, urban forestry planning, that's fifty percent match. I think that comes from the Forest Service, so again, I'm not sure if that'll be in place. But I told them to put it, Public Works, they asked me if I thought that they should leave it in the budget, I was like. Sure, I would cut it out if, if it's gonna conflict with the Red Mountain Trail, but if. You know, if they have all that money, might as well put it in to cut out, um, so that's where that stands.
Alright, uh, we're looking for a motion to adjourn. In a second. Alright, and then all in favor.
Thanks, Anne, see you later.
Thank you, sorry.